To all our members, colleagues, and friends from around the globe. And welcome to the Association for Materials Protection and Performance, better known as AMP. This is our first Town Hall for 2021. In this particular time slot, we welcome everybody that's here this evening. And my name is Joyce Wright. I'm the Chair for the Board of AMP Global Center. Before we get started, let's go over a few housekeeping details that should be helpful for everyone. So, as in case this is your first time at a Town Hall, and if not, just a reminder, all the participants are muted unless they are a presenter. Also, the Town Hall is being recorded and it will be online at a later date. If this is your first Town Hall, please use the the websites, sorry, the websites to look at all the Town Halls. So in case you've missed any even through 2020, feel free to go there and listen to those recordings. I think you'll find them very interesting and really catch you up with what's going on. Now, before we go to the next slide, I want everybody to take a look at their Zoom screen down at the bottom, just to get familiar with the one that says Q and A. So we will be using that this evening. When we get to the end, we will have any questions that you have during the presentations, and we will cover those at the same time. So remember, there's a difference between the chat and the Q and A. So please use Q and A for that as we go forward. All right, let's see what's on the agenda for this evening. So our presenters this evening will be Deborah Bové. She will be covering membership. We have Stephen Reinstadler, which will be presenting the Emerge Outreach Program. We'll also do a little overview, if you will, of how we got to where we are today, AMP. And we'll look at the AMP leadership at a glance. We'll cover some upcoming events. And very importantly, we want to know how are we going to stay informed as we go forward? Next slide. So those of you that may be new to Town Hall, this is a timeline recap, if you will. So you can see the exploratory meetings, if you will, started as far back as 2018. After that, we put together task groups from both NACE and SSPC. And by the first half of 2020, we not only brought to the boards, but also to the memberships as far as voting with regard to this merger. And as we all know today, all of those votes, the majority was yes. Going forward, we started working on integration of these two great organizations. We discussed branding. And as in any merger, there were a lot of legal documentation and things that we had to come through. But we did it in good fashion. And in 2021, we had the AMP launch event on January 6. And if by any chance you've missed that, again, please go on the websites, listen to that. I believe it's also on YouTube. And it was a great celebration and also gives you some ideas of how the merger got to the point it is today. That being said, we can see the first half of 2021 with two such great organizations that the integration still continues. And that's why we continue to have Town Halls so that we can keep you as as members, colleagues, and friends updated as we should. Next slide. So I like to, I like this slide because I think we should also look at, what do the numbers look like with AMP today? And you can see that after the merger, member wise, we have over 40,000 members now in 130 countries. I mean, think about that. Not only that, but 400 plus technical committees, 600 certified instructors now onboard, 75,000 certifications that we manage. And this is a snapshot in time. So you can imagine, we took these numbers in January of 2021. So I can assure you, these numbers have changed since then. So I'll give you a couple of minutes just to look at some of the other numbers. But I think it's a good perspective of what this merger has brought. Next slide. So let's take a look at the global locations now with regard to this merger. So if you look at the red designators, these are the AMP offices where staff also are located. And as you can see, there are nine of those. Also, you'll see in the blue what's called community offices. And Deborah is going to talk a little bit about communities a little bit later in the presentation. You may think of them more as chapters and sections. But I'll let her talk to you about that. And then, as you can see, there are three career development centers. I'm sure you're familiar with these. The first one being in Houston itself. Obviously, any, any classes going on at that center right now are being stopped due to the weather. So we hope everybody in that area is, is safe and, and comes through all of this weather. The second one is in Pittsburgh, also a career center, continuing on with the work that they were doing as well. And then the third one is in Dubai, as you can see. So again, a very good present that, presence that we have in the industry throughout the globe. And of course, we hope to see that grow. So let's talk about AMP and the impact that it has on this industry. AMP is now the leading source for material protection, performance information, and many other things, including contractor accreditation. AMP is structured around its global membership, from its bylaws to its committees. We want to have inclusive perspective in the development of our programs and standards, even our services as we go forward. Over time, our certification programs are going to be combined to enhance the value of all those certifications to both certified personnel and certifiers or specifiers, if you will, of certifications. Very important that we include both. Also, the impact that AMP will have is because we're larger, we're more widespread membership. And that strengthens our political advocacy, if you will, or influence on behalf of our industries. So that was a little overview. And I would like to get us started on the update for membership. And the Chair for this particular program committee is Deborah Bové. Deborah, would you like to start?
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for joining us this evening, afternoon, morning, depending on where you're joining us from. And it's my pleasure to bring you up to date on the membership committee. I think we will start with the next slide, which is the membership. Now, as of January 11th, any of the current, the renewing or the new members will have benefit of being a dual member. Now, what that will do is give you access to all of NACE and SSPC's benefits and services. But what you must do is go to your members page and opt in. It's very easy to do. And once that's done, you can take advantage. Please, it doesn't come normally, you just have to go in and opt in yourself. It's very important so that you can take advantage. New AMP membership is going to be launched later in 2021. And this is going to give you three tiered options for corporate and two options for our general membership. And we will start with our individual memberships on the next slide. I'll just touch base on just a couple of these because it's, it's right here for, for you to read everything that is included. But for our individual memberships, we're going to offer premium and standard. With the premium, you would have an annual due of $150, which offers you two standards and the MP as well as the Codings Pro. You will also have the standard option, which will be for $100 per year and will allow you one of the standards and either the MP or the Codings Pro. We also will continue to offer a lifetime membership, which is 65 years of age with 15 years of service, a young professional, which is 35 and under, as well as a student membership. And we will go on to our corporate membership. Corporate has option one, two, or three. With your corporate option one, you will have an annual due of 8,500, which will allow you 50 memberships, two conference registrations, and five recertification fees being waived. You will also have a logo and hyperlink on a high traffic page. Option two would be annual dues of 4,500, which will give you 25 memberships, one registration for conference, and three recertifications. And you'll also have a logo on an interior traffic page. With your corporate option three, you'd have a thousand dollar annual due with five memberships. And you would have your company listed on interior traffic page. From that, we'll go over to the chapters and section portion. And this is what we have most of our interest in and a lot of activity starting. With chapters and sections, all of our chapters and section activity is going to continue to operate as usual until later in 2021. And what we would like is anywhere that there is a chapter and a section in the same area, we would love to have you get to know each other, try to introduce yourself. And we just ask that you would do this either virtually or in compliance with any regional COVID restrictions or regulations. We, we want you guys to stay safe. AMP is going to launch our geographic communities later this year. And our communities basically are made up of the sections and the chapters. With that, plans for the new structure are being finalized. And we, as I said, we, we ask that you try and get to know each other if you are on the same area. It's, it's something that's going to continue through the next several months. Our, our group has just gotten together. We have our full roster for our committee. And it's a very, very diverse group. We spend a lot of time making sure that we have, that we have a diverse group of people that are very engaged, that represent both SSPC and NACE and all of our international groups as well. We have, we're pretty excited. We're having our first call in the next couple of weeks. And we know we have a lot of work that we have to get through in the next several months. And this is very important work. It's something that we all take very seriously and, and are pretty excited to get started on. Another opportunity that's coming forward is going to be AMP's Communities of Interest. And the framework's going to be developed later this year. And that's also going to allow members to engage globally with industry professionals that share your same interests. So you would have your geographic community as well as the opportunity to join a community of interest. And this basically just gives you another opportunity to engage in with professionals that share the same interests that you do as well. So another question that has been coming up is areas. And areas are going to continue to operate as usual. The difference will be instead of reporting to ACC, that will shift over to the Membership Program Committee. And we're going to continue to evaluate the regional structures during 2021. And we'll be reporting back the first quarter of 2022. So I just want to say that I've been a part of NACE and SSPC for the last 30 years. And I started at a grassroots in the sections and chapters and in the areas. And it's very, very important to me. Being in Canada, we have one foot in the US side of looking at North America and the other foot international. So we're really looking forward to the opportunities that are going to be coming up for our AMP membership over the next year and continuing on. So with that, I will turn it back over to Joyce.
Thank you, Deborah. We look forward to hearing from your program committee in the future. And right now, we have Stephen Reinstadler that would like to tell you about the new Student Outreach Program, Emerge. Stephen?
Yeah, thanks, Joyce. A big thank you to all you tuning in from around the world. I see a lot of names and locations out there. So that's, that's pretty exciting because that is something that I'll be touching on as I go through the next couple of slides. The, the inclusiveness of this program going forward is going to, is going to really rely on help and volunteers from around the world. So first, before we go further, I just want to make sure that everybody's clear. When we're talking about this Emerge Student Outreach, you may have known it either in the old former SSPC or NACE organization as the pre-professionals committee or the pre-professionals program. Well, when you ask different people, what does, what's a professional? And therefore, what's a pre-professional? You get a lot of different answers. And we wanted to eliminate, eliminate that, you know, that confusion that could be there. And what we said is the word student. And student means roughly the same thing to most people. It's somebody trying to learn about something to go to the next step, right? To gain, to gain knowledge. So if you would go to the next slide. So what, what we developed here in the, in the transitional stage was a program that would encompass all types of students, no matter where they were in their learning path. And that means everywhere from, you know, primary and secondary school to high school to university. And even as inclusive as military personnel that might be transitioning into civilian life, or even adults that might be transitioning from one profession to another. This is encompassing of those going on to university as well as those focusing on the trades. So that's one of the, one of the more exciting things about this new Emerge program is that it's very inclusive of everything that a student could be. And, and maybe in the past, that wasn't captured as well with the old, the old nomenclature. But now, to be sure, we are covering that. And I'm going to walk you through this circle because this circle was meant to be, you know, renewing as you go around it. So what does Emerge mean? It is pronounced Emerge, like there is an E at the end. And that's because the first E, the engage, ends up being the last E. But then the first E in this cycle, when it goes through its process again. So as I said, it's very inclusive of all different types of students. So what we first start with here is that we're going to engage primary and secondary students. That's the ones in, you know, in, let's say, first, first grade through eighth grade, let's say. And studies have shown, there's been a few studies that were industry sponsored studies that the National Science Foundation did. And they, they found through that study that if you're going to engage students and get them interested in either generically the STEM areas, you know, the science and, and mathematics and engineering, if you're going to engage them, you, you need to do that fairly early. If you wait until they're in high school or, or beyond, you've probably missed your, your window there. So with this Emerge program, one of the, one of the big pieces of it at the very beginning here is to engage those primary and secondary students to inform them of what, what this industry is all about, some of the science behind it, you know, and, and let them know about the everyday places that they run into this industry to start kind of nurturing that interest. Then we move on to the M, the magnetize. And that's when we start talking to, or continuing to talk to high school students. And that's both with a track that looks at the higher education path as well as the trades. And, and in that magnetize area, that's really where we're, we're kicking it up a notch. And we're starting to talk to them about why they might want to consider a career in this industry, both from the trades as well as the higher education. And some of those things that might be enticing to them is to know about, you know, what kind of salary, you know, would they, would they be considered for? What, is there travel involved? Many folks like to travel different places, you know? So, so we want to get them, again, thinking about this as a career and what would be needed after, you know, to, to get them to the point where they could enter this, this career. Which brings us to the next E. This is the second E, and that is educate. So it's something that the former organizations and AMP, as Joyce pointed out earlier, were very well positioned to provide that education. And, and that doesn't matter where they're at in their career path. And it doesn't matter whether they're going into higher education or the trades track, whether they're an adult or, or a younger student. This will be fleshed out so that there is, there is that chance for education for every point in that chain. Once they get that education, we move on to the raise portion of Emerge. This is really meant to be directional for, for these, for these new students or, or continuing students. We really want to make sure that we're partnering with, with different people in the process at, at the high school, at the, at the university level, with the different trades organizations to really help raise up and, and not just take that education, but really start to give them that guidance and direction on where they should go in this industry. So then, once we raise them, we're going to go to the guide and give back. And this is where the circle starts to eat its tail, if you will. If this guide and give back, this, this is where all of that that has happened for that student that gets to this level, that's been very valuable for them. It's very rewarding. And, and very often, they want to give back. And this is a chance for that person to become a mentor and then start the whole cycle over again and be part of that process to engage the very young students in the primary and secondary schools. So it's a full circle, as you can see. It, it touches on all the different points where a student might be defined as a student. Next slide, slide please. Is this going to be easy? No, it's, it's the 800 pound gorilla, right? You gotta, this is going to be something big. The good thing is, is that we have this metric that we can go through, right? And we can say, okay, what do we already have in inventory? And the great, the great news is, is that there are a lot of things that both organizations were really doing and doing well. And now that we're together as one, it's one plus one equals three. Because you can look in phase one and you're going to see some, some wording there that you go, oh, yeah, they already had that, like the C kits, right? Like the scholarship programs. So as you look at the columns, those are the different types of students. And as you look at the phase, that's how we're looking to, to phase in this, this, this program. So phase one is the low hanging fruit, right? Those are the things that, that need to be done first chronologically, but also might, we might have the benefit that they already existed in some form or another in the, in the other organizations. So we're going to, we're going to go after that low hanging fruit and get this, this ball rolling, right? Many of these programs existed primarily in North America. So what we need to do in phase one is those ones, those programs that were working well for us, we need to have those contacts in the different parts of the world so that we can easily phase that phase one in across the world. Then, as we get some things going here and we build those relationships, you can see in several of the columns, there's, there's the discussion about, you know, building that relationship, for example, with the high school student level, being able to reach out to one of the counselors, one of those career counselors, or a certain teacher that might champion this type of, this type of program. So once we have some of that in phase one, then we can move on to phase two and start to address some of these other items in each of the columns in phase two. And then again, as we start to get some of those going and we can, we can multiply them to other countries and different parts of the world, we can then move on again to the next phase, which would be phase three. And this is, this is a constantly changing chart here. I mean, as we, as we do things, we may, we made a value, we may evaluate something and determine that, that probably isn't a good fit. Or we might come up with something that's brand new after talking with people in the industry that we might add to this. And it depends on where we would add it, phase one, two, or three. So this will be, this will be in movement. But this is our plan right now. I think it's, it's an aggressive but doable plan. And it really starts to address very quickly some of these needs that are out there for the students that might want to learn about our industry. Let's go to the next slide. So did it, just to kind of wrap that up, again, that Emerge, hopefully it sticks in your head what that means. These are emerging students in our industry, right? So very apropos name there for it. We're going to first start with engaging with, with these, these younger students, something that we didn't really do very much in the past. We're, we're going to, we're going to amplify that, if you will. We're going to magnetize those students and, and really give them more information at a little bit, little bit higher age, maybe at that high school level and even beginning of university. We're going to provide all of this education and, and teaching resources all the way through that line, all the way through first grade into university, through speakers that might, might go to a university, through using volunteers and organization to talk to or do a demonstration on corrosion with an eighth grade science class, let's say. So we're really going to use all those educational tools. And then by using that GPS, our network of people, professions, trades, and, and organizations, we're going to use that to raise these skillsets up and really give direction to these new, these new students that are entering and looking to enter into our industry. And then, as I mentioned, this whole thing comes back around the circle. And those, those students that have gone through the process and have really got, you know, a lot out of it and are now, you know, a, a contributing member to our industry can now have an outlet where they can mentor and help the next group of students. can now have an outlet where they can mentor and help the next group of students starting out through the process. I think that's my last one. Yes, it is. All right, Joyce, back to you.
Thank you, Stephen. We all look forward to seeing how you and your committee will grow this program. So that being said, let's take a snapshot, if you will, of what AMP leadership looks like. As you can see, under the AMP in red, there is a board of directors for that particular area. You can see the program committees that are attached to that board. Membership was one that we covered today. Also, you can see on the far my right, AMP Global Center Board. You can see the programs that are also underneath that board as well. And today was the Emerge Student Outreach. Of course, we hope to get an update from all of these committees as we move forward. You'll also see some joint committees, if you will, that obviously are dealing with both boards and our advisory councils that we are currently working on and look forward to that advisory part that they will play to both parts, both boards, if you will. Next slide. So you saw a quick glimpse, if you will, at our program committees. But I think what's really important to everyone is that you know who the chairs are to these program committees. This gives you the names of all of those chairs. You can see by the colors, again, the snapshot that we saw for leadership, which ones fall under the AMP board and which ones are under AMP Global Center. But I think what's important is even though there are two boards, believe me, both boards are aligned together. And our goal is to work together and do what's best for AMP as an organization across the globe. So we really look forward to you getting to know some of these chairs as we again move forward. So upcoming events, let's talk about those. If you don't already know, Corrosion 2021 is going to happen. It's going to be April 19th through the 30th. And it's going to be a virtual conference. Registration is now open. So if you haven't gone and looked at that, please get started. If you have your camera on your phone, you can also take a snapshot here and that will download to your phone. But don't wait. I think this virtual conference is going to be very exciting. Our staff and members have worked extremely hard to make this happen. So we're all looking forward to it and we hope to see and hear back from you when this is over as well. Next on the events is Codings Plus. As of right now, we are still having Codings Plus, December 13th through the 16th, and that will be in Phoenix, Arizona. I will say however, from day to day, COVID kind of rules what will be coming forth as, as we move towards this date in December. But we hope for the best and we'll keep you updated with regard to that. And then, after the merger, new AMP, we will have an annual conference. So we really look forward to that. And as you can see, wait a minute, I got. That is March 6th through the 10th, 2022. So put it on your calendar. That's San Antonio, Texas. So that will be the first AMP annual conference. So let's definitely look forward to that. So how are we going to continue to keep you guys informed as we move into 2021? Of course, there's always going to be the town halls, at least from the beginning here, monthly through April and then June, September, and December. And again, if you do happen to miss one, please tell your friends or colleagues that they can go on the websites and still listen to the recordings in case they do have any questions afterwards. Social media platforms, again, I think I mentioned some, you know, there's YouTube. There's also LinkedIn and many others. So please take a look at your favorite one. And if you don't see us on there, please reach out and let us know. Also, there are weekly AMP update emails. You should have been getting them. And of course, online. Now, AMP.org isn't quite here yet. So we're still using our websites for NACE and SSPC. But there will be more content, if you will, coming when AMP.org is, is ready for us to present. All right. So I think we have gotten to an important part of this presentation. And that is some of the Q and As. So let me go down here and take a peek. Let's see, first one from Lucas. How does membership work for new NACE membership trying to opt in? Heather, can you maybe help with this?
Yes, Joyce, happy to. Hi, Lucas. So just to clarify, at this time, the NACE membership model and SSPC membership model will carry forth until the new AMP membership model launches later this year. Now, if you are currently a NACE member or SSPC member, you do have the option to opt in to membership in the other organization at no additional cost. And this is done directly from your member profile page. And Lucas, I'm happy to follow up with you via email after this town hall. And I can share additional instructions or help as needed.
Great, thank you, Heather. Lucas, I hope that answered your question. And if not, please do reach out to Heather. She'd be glad to help you. So, um, I would go on to the next question, but I must have missed one somewhere along the line. So my participants, please feel free to reach out this evening. And if you have any questions whatsoever, go to the bottom of your screen and click on Q and A. And please type that in. I'll give you guys a few minutes. In the meantime, Sam, did you have anything that maybe you'd like to add? I know you've done very successfully many town hall meetings yourself.
Thank you, Joyce. Yeah, so I mean, things to add. I, I definitely want to thank Deborah and Steve as our program committee chairs to come on and share some information, valuable information for our members to give them, you know, some updates on what's going on, what's continuing to go on as we further develop in all of these areas and our integration aspects. You know, I would encourage any of the participants, if they have any other questions that aren't specifically directed towards membership or pre-professional activities, you know, now is a good time to ask. We do actually have some time here. Sometimes when we run a little tight on time, we have to limit the questions. But I think here we should have plenty of time to cover anything that would come up, no matter what it is. So, so I encourage anyone, you know, please, if you have questions, ask away. Also, if you're interested in, in getting more involved, I'd also say that there's going to be some more volunteer opportunities coming out. So please pay attention to your email and other communications that we'll be sending out. If you do have any interest in one particular area, the names on this presentation will be available on the websites so that you could look back and you can find out who, especially if you know the chair of each one of these program committees, feel free to reach out to them, share your thoughts, any insight that you have. It's particularly important for us to hear from you as our membership, as to what it is that you like, you want to have happen, any improvements that you see, and especially if you're interested in volunteering because it's one of the aspects of this new organization that we're looking for is to reach out to the diversity of our membership, to find people who maybe in the past haven't been participating in, in different ways and get them involved. So, so yeah, we encourage you all to do that. That's about it from me. Thanks, Joyce.
All right, thank you, Sam. And you're right, I can't say enough for our volunteer membership. It has always been a good one and it continues to grow through this merger. And I look forward to what it will become even more as we move forward in 2021. And of course, hearing from all of these programs at one time or another during the year. Wow, you know, we are good. We are really, really good. And I appreciate all the participants that took some time to log on today as well. And Sam, I appreciate your perspective there. Helena, I don't, I don't want to by any means leave, leave you out. You may also have some insight that we could add to our participants today before we do sign off. We'd appreciate hearing from you.
Well, I think I would just add that I would encourage everybody to keep up with the town hall schedule. Keep up with those websites. We have so many activities that are being integrated in AMP. And, and some of the activities, as you've heard tonight, are either going to be new or they're going to be different or there will be some changes. So if you, if you logged in not really knowing what you were going to see, we focused on young professionals and membership. You know, if you have an interest in another area, keep logging in or send one of us a note. And if you have a particular interest, we can make sure that, that you know when that's going to be covered in the schedule. So I want to thank as well Joyce and for doing a great job moderating and Sam. And then, of course, our volunteer leaders, Stephen and Deborah, because volunteers are what, are what this association is all about. So we really do appreciate that. Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you, Elena. All right, that being said, I do not see anything else on the board today. Hopefully, you will have an opportunity to look back at maybe some other town halls to catch you up. And we look forward to you being part of the next town halls going forward. And again, thank you so much for taking the time to hear what we have to have or have to say and inform you today as members, colleagues, and friends.